Will you please call the roll?
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Kilby? Counselor Lee? Counselor Reposo?
Yep.
Chair Kadim?
Here. Counselor Kilby is not going to be able to make it tonight. He did have a business commitment that he had to attend to. And then Counselor Lee was feeling under the weather, so to be on the safe side, he's not going to be here as well. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizen input. Anybody from the community would like to speak? Hearing none. Item number two is minutes from February 8th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve was made by Counselor Reposo.
Second.
Second by Counselor Dion. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries. Item number three is the minutes from March 1st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Reposo, second by Counsel Dion. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously. Item number four, proposed ordinance, traffic handicap parking, referred to the council on March 22nd, 2022, or, I'm sorry, the committee, and on April 12th, 2022. Discussion?
Motion to...
We need a motion emergency preamble for the handicap.
I would make the motion for emergency preamble.
I'll second.
Emergency, motion for emergency preamble was made by Counsel Dion, second by Counsel Reposo. Roll call?
On the emergency preamble, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Kilby? Counselor Lee? Counselor Reposo?
Yes.
Chair Kadim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the handicap was made, handicap spots was made by Counsel Dion, second by Counsel Reposo. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously. Item number five is proposed ordinance for traffic miscellaneous, referred March 22nd and then April 12th. We have some stop sign intersections designated one-way streets, 30-minute parking, and handicap spots to be removed. Any discussion?
No. Do you need a emergency preamble for this as well?
No, that's just removal.
Just removal?
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve?
Motion to approve was made by Counsel Dion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Reposo. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six is the proposed ordinance for water and sewer rates. At this time, I'll ask the administration to come down. As the members of the committee are aware, the budget was passed at the last council meeting. The rates were included in the budget presentation. I'll turn it over to Director Furlan to discuss the rate increases, but there is an eight-cent increase in both water and sewer, I believe.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you very much, counselors. As we heard last week, the sewer division budget and the water division budget were presented to the council. Those did go through council and were approved. Tonight in front of you, you have the rates that accompany those budgets to be able to support them. The sewer rate is in the amount of $5.75 per CCF. That's the proposed rate. Stormwater does not change, so the sewer rate is increased eight cents per CCF for the rate, for the average, for the rate on the sewer. That's for an average household, $4.24 per year increase. Within the water division, the proposed rate is $3.57 per CCF. That is an eight-cent increase from the prior year. Again, that is a $4.24 increase to the average household per year. The total impact to customer between the water increase, the sewer increase, is an increase of $8.48 per year.
Any discussion? Counsel Reposo?
Just a clarification on, define the average household.
So the average household is based off of 53 CCFs per a year usage, and that's talking for an average household. So that could be a single-family house or one unit of a multifamily.
Thank you.
That is something that comes up year after year. In the past, I've done a sampling of, a sample set of residents throughout the city. Last year, I used a sample set of 20. This year, I expanded it and I went to all of our eight-family and below residential units. So that would be single-family, all the way up to eight families. Pulled all their usage. It was over 16,000 accounts, and that's what they came, that's what the average came up with. I wanted to check to make sure that that usage was still the average for our customers.
And when was that run?
That calculation was run probably about two months ago, I believe. I can go back, I have it right in here, the full calculation. So average household, we used a number of accounts within the MUNA system that we pulled was 16,084 accounts. The total number of units that that accredited to was 31,592 units. Breaking that down with their usage from the prior, from a calendar year 2021, the actual consumption, the actual calculation came out to 50.69 CCFs. So what we use to calculate the average household is a little bit higher than the actual calculated.
I yield, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dion?
Yeah. And if I remember correctly, average household is two and a half people, correct?
That's national average based on the census, but that can be looked up on the census.
Okay. The only comment that I have is, as you know, I've been an advocate for Opera funding for sewer and water infrastructure. I don't feel sufficient monies have been utilized for this purpose. I feel like more money is going to everything else. We all know that we can't immediately give anybody any relief right now, but if we were to be able to make this investment, future rate increases may not necessarily need to happen, or would be at a reduced amount. And because I'm still heavily advocating for the Opera funding to help with this water and sewer infrastructure, we all know that there's more, you know, new projects coming down the road, that there's more work than you can even get done as expediently as you'd like to get it done. So, and for that reason, I'm going to say no again, because I'm not seeing that, I'm just not seeing the funding, I'm not seeing that being dedicated to something I strongly believe it should be dedicated to. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Counsel Reposo. It was our second. I'll second as chair. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
So this would be to pass the proposed ordinance through first reading. Correct?
Correct.
Counselor Dion?
No.
Counselor Kilby? Counselor Lee? Counselor Reposo?
Yes.
Chair Kadim?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, counselors. Thank you. Have a good one.
Item number seven is a proposed ordinance on compost recycling. This was tabled on July 26th, 2021. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion.
Motion made by Counsel Reposo, second by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. I don't know if, do we need anybody from the administration to come down? So the ordinance that was before us looked like there was just some corrections or changes that were suggested by KP, and those have been incorporated into the ordinance. So I don't know if members have any discussion or questions. Ms. Demme?
The only comment that I would make is, at the last meeting when this was tabled, it was Counsel Pereira who suggested it be tabled, because Counsel Lee, who basically was behind this composting ordinance, wasn't here to be able to vote on it, and that's basically the reason why it was tabled at that time.
Well, I can, just to that point, when Counsel Lee did send it out, he was just asking whether or not, if, I thought there might be an issue passing it. So I think he's comfortable enough, he's looking to get it passed.
Okay.
So that's just from my standpoint. And then, if he does have any issues, if it goes to full council, obviously he'll have an opportunity.
He can speak on it then.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I yield.
Any other discussion? No? Do you want to add anything?
No, I'm good, Counsel.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve was made by Counsel Dion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Reposo. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries. Thank you for coming down.
No, thank you for having us.
I'll make sure Ms. Aiken doesn't charge you for the words. All right. We'll pay you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a resolution to consider combining the Historical Commission with the Far River Historic District Commission. This was tabled back in February 4th, 2021.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Dion, second by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries. Discussion?
Yeah, the only comment, again, that I would make is, I think this is, this is a no-brainer and something that people have been waiting for, for years, and I think it's going to enhance, as opposed to, I think it's just going to enhance what, you know, what their mission is and what the commissions try to do. I think they've been waiting a very long time for this. With that, I'll yield.
Perfect. Questions? No? Do you folks want to say a few words, or are you comfortable with the ordinance? I know Attorney Remsey was in communication with, I think, you or both of you?
Today.
Okay.
I spoke to him today.
All right. So we're... Do you know, he was... Sorry? No, I'm sorry, I was talking to Seth.
He should be here, Volteiro.
Okay.
I know that he was planning on actually being back now, so if we just give him a minute, I think he should be. I apologize.
No, that's fine. So if you folks don't mind, what we'll do is we'll just bypass this, come back to it, and, because I know Attorney Remsey is going to be here, so he'll have the ordinance, so we can kind of really speak to it. And then we can take the vote then. Second?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So if there's no objections, we'll move on to item number nine. Resolution Committee on Ordinance and Legislation Convened to Discuss Unregistered Motorbikes Traveling on City Streets. This was adopted as amended on April 12th, 2022, so I'll ask the chief and the administration to come down, so we can have some discussion on the recommended ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, hello.
So I know, I've had the opportunity to meet with the administration and the chief to discuss their proposed ordinance, and I think I brought it up when the resolution came before us in full council. The chief was pulling some ordinances from Providence, Boston, and Taunton, and there was some discussion in terms of what he liked and didn't like, so I know they were going to compile a recommended ordinance, so I don't know, I think there was a draft ordinance that was, that was submitted for us to talk through, so I don't know if you folks have that, we can...
So I don't have that, unfortunately. Attorney Remsey should be here in a minute. I can just briefly, sort of go through the process, given the resolution, I believe it was introduced by Counsel Pereira some time ago, and based upon that, we had several meetings where we looked at the Taunton ordinance, which has been a very, pretty successful ordinance, and one of the more recent ones that's been put together. Providence is, has a slightly different take, because they, one, it's a different state, and two, they're very aggressive about grabbing the vehicles, destroying some of the vehicles. And I think there's some question as to whether the issues that Providence is trying to combat with their ordinance are the same as with the issues here in the city of Fall River. And I think that it seems like with their ordinance, they're much more aggressive, much more sort of police proactive, in part because there is a real public safety issue that rises more above just, I don't want to say a nuisance, as if we're dismissing the importance of it, it's very important. But it is a true active public safety issue there, and here, I don't think it's at that level yet, thankfully. So with regard to Boston's ordinance, that is probably the strictest. It only allows one unregistered ATV recreational vehicle on a person's property in plain view, whereas Taunton allows four. And so we tried to, using guidance from Chief Govan, and what he's aware of with regard to the interactions they've had with ATVs, reckless use of ATVs and unregistered ATVs on city streets, we tried to sort of create a hybrid ordinance that then the, this committee could kind of chip away at, or add to, as the case may be. Not sure, probably going to run out of stuff to say before Attorney Remsey gets here, so I may have to turn it over to Chief Govan, you get fair warning. But I will say that one of the things that we've kicked around is that there are statutes, state statutes in place that do address some of these issues. And I will say that with regard to the definition of a motor vehicle, largely it's based upon engine size and maximum speed. And so if you look at dirt bikes, ATVs, both trikes and four-wheelers, most of those could fall into that definition based upon engine size. It's really mopeds and maybe segways that you'd have a problem with, but I don't think that the segways are the ones that are causing terror in the streets. If they were, I'd almost love to see that. But the thing about the vehicles that actually have the capacity to quickly get away and elude police, those are the ones that would fall into the definition of having a large enough engine and being fast enough. So, I might be off the hook, Chief. So with regard to, one of the things we're talking about is the statutes negligent operation of a motor vehicle and reckless operation of a motor vehicle. Those are felonies that actually come with loss of license for up to a year, can come with the loss of the vehicle, and actually go on your criminal record. So we sort of looked at this as almost a way to give the police a lesser penalty. So the 18-year-old kids, you know, who does this stupidly, doesn't have his life destroyed because he's, you know, hot-rotting with his motorbike or his dad's motorbike, and you don't subject a family to thousands and thousands, thousands of dollars in fines and legal fees trying to combat a felony, when what we're really trying to do is address a public safety issue that maybe doesn't rise to that level. So with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Remsey.
And Chief Govan thanks you, because, you know, the administrator was running out of words to say, and he was going to turn it over to the chief, so...
My apologies. Well, I don't want to repeat too much, because I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Aiken had to say, but, you know, we've discussed with the administration, chief of police, the mayor, at least one city councilor that I'm aware of, just trying to figure out, you know, put everything on the board to see what options are out there. I'm not sure that all the options that we discussed are something that we can implement, but it's at least up for discussion. We can talk about it, and I can see if it can fit legally, whether it's constitutional that we can do it or not. So, with that, how do you want to approach it? I mean...
So the only thing I've said, the only... The only thing I've said so far is that we created a hybrid ordinance that had everything in it, with the intent of talking through it with the committee to chop it down and to shape it however they want, and that we were thinking of this as a way to give the police another tool that might be lesser in severity than the felony tools that already exist, that would accomplish essentially the same end. And that's pretty much where we ended.
Yeah, so if we could, just based on what we had talked about, just if we have a copy of the ordinance, or just some talking points of the ordinance, just to highlight, so we can just begin discussions and then...
Sure.
Move forward with, you know, I think, because I think we're all on the same page, but it's, how detailed do we want, and which do we want to implement in terms of some of the items in the ordinance? You know, are we limiting it to just one, you know, ATV or recreational vehicle? Are we going to be destroying vehicles, things of that nature? I think those are the conversations that need to be had.
Makes sense. Just, just so you know, this is a list of what the ATV rules are, all 50 states. I haven't read each and every single state, but Massachusetts seems to be one of, if not the most comprehensive. So the state law is already pretty significant. So there's not a whole lot of holes to fill, but let's take through, I mean Seth was kind enough to kind of put together a list of all things, all options here. So if I can just go through it slowly here, let's see. Talk about definitions, registration. Okay, so Massachusetts requires registration, and I think everybody needs to understand that these, I'll just use ATVs, but we're talking all sorts of different recreational vehicles, but ATVs are not permitted on public ways in the state of Massachusetts. So, I mean, keep in mind, everybody that you see out there, they're already breaking the law. There's already a law that requires them to stop when a police officer requests them to stop, they're supposed to have the registration handy, they have to give their, obviously, their real name. So there's numerous violations just by speeding away from the police.
So before, before we move on, can we just stay on that point? So from a police department standpoint, what are we running, what issues are we running into? So when we trying to, to have them pull over, they're, are they taking off, we're not following them?
Sure. And that's, essentially, that's correct. And when we've tried to stop these vehicles in the past, they've taken off, or what they've done is they've, they've done something that the police officer has determined to be dangerous. And by our policy, once that situation happens, more likely than not, the sergeant who's involved in this pursuit is going to call it off immediately. So that's where we end, and then some people are baiting us to try to chase them, but obviously they're aware of our situation as well. So part of this is, you know, we just need to try to develop some more tools, some different ways we can combat it. And the other thing is, we have to be a little bit outside the box of how are we going to try to catch these people ultimately?
And the ultimate goal, obviously, is to avoid the dangerous pursuits, similar to what we've seen on the news with Providence and things of that nature.
Correct. So we don't want to inflame, we don't have the same situation as in Providence, I think Springfield also had a serious issue. So we don't want to get into a situation where we're inflaming it and we're encouraging it, but we do want to address it at some point.
Okay.
All right, so the first thing on this list here is whether we allow unregistered vehicles on personal property. And I guess the best way to compare it is, a lot of people don't know this, but your motor vehicle, your car, you're not supposed to have in your own driveway, even though it's not a public way, if it's not properly registered. So, you know, just with ATVs, they're supposed to register as well, so some communities have instituted a regulation that says no more than three or four, or something along those lines.
What's the, what's the ordinance now? One unregistered in, in city, per ordinance?
Like an unregistered motor vehicle.
Yeah, motor vehicle.
So, I mean, for this one, I'm not sure this is going to solve the problem, no matter what we have here. You know, if somebody who lived in, you know, a rural part of the, the city had 10 of them in their property, and, you know, their buddies came from out of town and they rode them on their own property, nobody would really care. So, I mean, it's something to consider, I guess, but I'm not sure this one's going to solve the problem. Going down to...
So just before, just before we get into, so I guess what's, what's the recommendation, or what are we looking to do in terms of, I guess we're going to put a number on the limit of, of bikes that are either unregistered, well, I guess if they're registered, they're fine, so unregistered bikes?
Correct. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, at some point, you can decide whether you want to have one or four, and whether you want to allow them to have them either on their property, or within Boston, they've given them the ability to have the same number within a four-walled contained building. So, you know, I think in time, it's more, and what we're looking for is more outside that four-walled building. I think, I think in talking to Attorney Remsey, we may end up, if we're trying to limit people's ownership of a product within a garage under their ownership, we may run into some issues later on down the line. We want to correct the problem, but we certainly don't want to steer ourselves into a subsequent lawsuit later on either.
Right. So just the enforcement piece and the legality of limiting how, how much they can have on their property, I guess are we, are we looking to go down that road, though, to have at least a number? And what is, I guess, what is that comfortable number that...
Personally, I don't know that it's going to matter. I mean, I'm not sure that we even need this provision. I know other people may disagree with me. I don't, it's, it's obviously not going to help any enforcement issues that we, the issues we currently have. You know, there's, there are exceptions to the registration, so if you're racing or anything else, and you imagine that people that are racing are the ones that are going to have, you know, under-sanctioned races, they're going to have probably more than three or four anyway. You know, it's, people who have them on their own property are not the problem, so I'm not sure we even need this portion in there.
Yeah, so I guess I don't, I don't disagree, and I, I'm going into the enforcement piece once we get there, is how do we, how do we enforce, you know, with the vehicles? But I also, trying to figure out, you know, trying to do the pros and cons in terms of, how do we give this ordinance the teeth that you folks need to really kind of police and address some of these issues? And maybe to, you know, to the attorney's point, this, this probably isn't one worth for a whole lot of discussion, but...
I think the part of the policy, I believe, when talking about numbers of recreational vehicles on person's property, what happens is, you may have a group that's riding together, and they take off and they end up on that same property, or they're hiding out in a particular garage, that this is where they're being stored. It could be eight to 10 bikes, they're all pertaining to this group. We go there for one or two, because we see something, now we have all these others that are sitting there. Do we take them, do we not? Are they allowed to be there? So there may be a situation where we are legally enforcing the law seizing a...
Unregistered.
An unregistered dirt bike or ATV, and it may be in the presence in that same building of 10 to 12 of others. That's the potential that we're looking at.
Okay.
Hypothetically, I mean, if there's a hot pursuit, the police are going to be able to go onto the property and do what needs to be done. Is it possible that this provision is other communities, because what if the, the law enforcement loses sight of them for a certain period of time, and then, you know, within a mile, they see, you know, eight dirt bikes on a personal property? Well, we probably know what happened there. You know, I, I think that may be the reason why sometimes this exists, is entirely, you know, is, I think you could articulate hot pursuit without it, but, you know, if, if we need it in there, if, if the legislative body wants it in there, we can figure out a way to put it in there, I guess, and I can check to see the legality of it. I do have some concerns right now, but I haven't thoroughly researched it.
So would there also be a way to tie it to, obviously, as opposed to, you know, if, to your point, if, if I'm storing a recreational vehicle on my property and I'm not using it in the street illegally, we're not targeting myself, but if Andrew decides that he wants to go ride his vehicle and he wants to pull into somebody's, meet up with his friends in somebody else's property, you've got, you know, four to five, or eight, or 10 vehicles, you're looking to be able to confiscate that. So is there a way to, to tie it to the legal operation in the road, which will then, if there are any, any and all unregistered vehicles at that point on any given property would be seized? Do you know what I'm saying? So tying it to the actual illegal use on, on a street as opposed to just on a property? So we're not violating property rights? And I don't know that we can do that.
And I certainly understand your point. I think sometimes, I think if we over-convolute the issue...
Yeah.
The more difficult we make it, the more complicated we make it, the dictate of the street office is going to be not to enforce it. So if it, if it is something that it's seen as overly confusing, I would suggest that we move on, because I know what's going to happen eventually in the street, it'll be, hey, what's this rule regarding this? And then somebody's going to throw up their hands and they're going to take whatever bike that they're dealing with, and then they'll move on.
If I, if I may. So I look at it as more of an investigatory tool. You might recall, several years ago, maybe four years ago, there was an incident in, in front of the Walmart, and these were motorcycles, not ATVs, but, but it was a number of guys riding together, an older gentleman in his vehicle hit one by mistake... An older gentleman in his vehicle hit one by mistake, they surrounded him, and an off-duty police officer intervened. It turned into quite a, quite a thing. Those motorcycles were ultimately found because people gave descriptions of them, and then police found the motorcycles later. They didn't actually stop them or track them down. And I think in this particular situation, when police are electing to not pursue ATVs that are recklessly driving, doing wheelies and side wheelies and whatever else on the street, they may come away more often than not with a description of the vehicle. If you then have a report from a neighbor or a report from minimum housing of a number of vehicles, one of which may match that description, you now have at least the basis for a threshold inquiry, maybe not a warrant, but certainly a threshold inquiry to investigate on that property based upon the presence of unregistered or multiple vehicles in violation of the ordinance. So I think it gives the police another tool that isn't without value.
Yep. Is there any discussion on this? Move on. Okay. We can move on.
Okay. Another section some communities have, have, something along property on another. I'll just read it to you. No person shall operate, maintain, or possess a recreational vehicle upon the property of another without written permission of the landowner of that person. For purposes of the subsection, property of another shall include any property owned or leased by the city, including any city public school property, playgrounds, parks, or conservation areas, or any land in which the city holds any conservation restriction. Once again, I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure if this is really going to enact it or not, whether it's going to help our problem in the city. So, I mean, it's up for discussion if you want to talk about it. I'm not sure that's really necessary for this ordinance, but...
Ultimately, it's another tool. It's an ordinance, and the ordinance will be assigned a fine. And I believe the fine right now is $150 at the low end for the criminal, for what's in 90B. I know we were looking at the proposed ordinance, that we're looking at 300 on a fine, also with the possibility of towing. And then there was some further, I don't want to get in front of you here, counselor, but with some other restrictions about paying that fine and where we go from there.
I mean, I'm guessing here, but you're talking about written permission from the landowner. I guess I can imagine where there's some kind of pursuit and they're on somebody's property and, you know, the police arrive and the landowner says, no, no, you know, they're allowed. There's no written permission at that time, so I guess it's, you know, and technically violating the letter of the law. But once again, we're getting to property rights, and I'm not, I'm not sure that this will, is legally permissible. I'm happy to look into it if that's what this, you know, body wants to, wants me to look into, but I'm not sure that's really required here.
Counselor, do you have?
Yeah, I guess my question was going to be, would that give the police the authority to remove that vehicle from the property? Because they don't have the consent of the owner. That would be number one. Number two, if there is written permission and the owner is giving consent, what legal ramifications are there for that property owner at that point? In terms of the other person's actions, does that somehow carry over to the property owner?
Correct. So number one, there are other restrictions that, so this is a kind of a moving piece, if you will. So when we're taking it single line by single line, it might not make much sense. But I also believe when we talked about this particular piece, that the landowner would also have to have a tract of land equal to two and a half acres of land. We don't want somebody who's on one of our small side streets saying, you know, I gave them written permission to be in our backyard 25 feet away from the neighbor's house doing donuts and creating their own little dirt track. So if there is a violation of ordinance, one of the penalties, possibly the towing, and then it's tied to those other fines and fees along with the tow.
So essentially, if there's a minimum amount of acreage, in part, does the consent really matter or not matter? If they're on a parcel that isn't large enough anyways?
It would have to still comply. If it's not their land, they would have to comply with all the pieces of the ordinance. They have the ability to ride legally in some areas of the state forest, in certain parts of Massachusetts. There is areas where they can do it legally in tracks in Rhode Island. And anytime there's a sanctioned bike race that involves dirt bikes or ATVs that could be promulgated by any municipality, they certainly have the ability to ride there.
So do you feel that that would be something that would be beneficial to you if, if, you know?
Well, I think when we took, when we looked at the other ordinances, we tried to be as inclusive as possible. Could this possibly be a situation we're facing at some point in the future? And we went with the bigger bite, if you will. We went through all this. Now, I agree with Attorney Rumsey, some of these are not individually going to solve our problems. But it is another hurdle for people to go over as to where they're going to ride freely and legally.
Good, thank you.
Interesting, now, we've been playing devil's advocate on this for a while, trying to debate it back and forth. And, you know, this body might have other ideas that we haven't thought of yet, which is why we're kind of presenting maybe an over-inclusive amount of potential ordinances, because we don't want to miss anything.
I think, I think even though we're having discussion, I think that's healthy. But I also would suggest that at some point, you get a copy of the, all the pieces. And then when you actually read it, I think you'll be able to absorb how many of the different pieces fit together.
Yes, it becomes a whole, as opposed to just
Within slicing area, and it's hard to put it together without knowing the full scope.
Yeah, and if I haven't made it clear, I mean, the concern with AMB, the legal concerns are just with the property rights. They're very similar as far as the legal analysis. But going down to the next section, which is something I'm much more in favor of, it's entitled hazardous operation. And what this attempts to do is prevent trick riding, stunt riding, wheelies. And it defines all sorts of what dangerous operation entails. I think this would play into, it would be in addition to the state statute. It's something more specific to just Fall River. And I don't see any issue with that, but if anybody wanted to discuss it, that's something we could maybe have a progressive fine. It would be in addition to any kind of state remedies that already exist.
Discussion on that?
This would include also having more than one rider when there's not, there's a seat for just one. There's a whole definition of dangerous hazardous operation. So was the idea on this?
Correct. It's some bigger teeth regarding the fine amount. And then the potential for any violation for the towing, and then the surcharges from there.
So what do we currently do in terms of, when, let's assume for a second that's when an officer puts the lights on to pull somebody over, they stop, and there's two individuals and there's only one seat. What's, I guess, what's the action that occurs at that point?
That's a good question, because that's actually what I wanted to bring up, too, is the way it's written right now, as I said, we just threw everything on there. I think it makes more sense to have the penalty for each infraction included under that subsection, because we may want to have a different penalty for, you know, riding wheelies down the street that we will for any other infraction. So I would probably, even if it's the same, I would include it on each one potentially, and that way it could be easy to change as well.
Okay. So what do we, what do we currently do, again, assuming they stop?
If they were to get stopped, we'd be charging them under chapter 90B. The issue ultimately is, it goes to a judge, and whether they believe that's a serious issue or not, that's going to be where it gets played out. They can go right back to the tow company, pay the storage fee, and then they're out.
Out again. So with this one, you would obviously, again, the whole remedy would be at that point, you would be towing, fine, whatever the fine schedule comes out to be. And then, and I guess I got the Cliff Notes version in advance, so potentially having to also trailer out their vehicle.
Correct. So part of this, and we're going to go back into this, we're thin slicing these pieces. When you take it as a whole, you'll see there's another subsection talking about the tow company where it'll have to, the fines will have to be paid, the corp fees will have to be paid, the tow and storage fee will have to be paid. And prior to removal, the owner will have to then produce an ability to legally take the ATV or the recreational vehicle from that site. So they'd either have to have a truck that would fit the ATV or recreational vehicle and/or a trailer. That would make it a little bit, a little bit more difficult for someone who's, you know, just joyriding and, you know, doing this illegally to invest the money into this project unless they're really serious about it. But I don't think those are the people that we have an issue with.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want something so draconian that if it were just an innocent, so to speak, teenager who just happened to bring it on the street for a quick second and got pulled over and complied and immediately pulled over, you know, should be, there should be a fine in place. And I think registration is absolutely necessary, because, you know, you can make the argument that if you're just on your own backyard property and it never is seen by the public, you know, the argument's, well, why do I need to register it? But once you're on the street, I think to get it back, it needs to be registered, and there should be a fine. You know, the question is, you know, how, what kind of fine and do we want for the first offense as opposed to the second and the third? And, you know, I think, as you said, I think we should take them individually for hazardous operation might be different from some of the other infractions. But right now, the way this is, you know, it's potentially up to a $300 fine for the first violation, 500 for future. I mean, that might be a little bit high for the first infraction, in my opinion, but as I said, it's
Do you own a dirt bike?
I
I was just curious. I don't think it's that high. I think this is, I think this is what other towns are charging. They're serious about it, and I think
I think the difference is, you know, most of us don't live out in the reservation area. But I have lived in areas more similar where dirt bikes are everywhere. I've ridden numerous dirt bikes on personal property and, you know, at an extremely young age. And I don't want to have what maybe somebody who lives right here on South Main Street thinks is right or wrong, be the same rules necessarily apply throughout the reservation. We have to kind of look at Fall River as an entire community, not just the more urban part of Fall River. That's what I'm worried about.
And we did talk about this. I mean, we're not necessitating officers to use the language of must and shall. I mean, this is where real police work happens, where we're talking about the discretion of a police officer in handling these matters. And good police officers, good community police officers and neighborhoods are going to know how to handle this for these situations. But in reality, you know, it's really not what's scaring people. It's not what we're really looking at in the community right now.
So just in terms of the 90B, right, that's what you said, the violation would be currently? So there's a citation attached to it now? So would we? So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand, based on the fine that we want to implement now and how that relates to the 90B. So is there a double, double fine or?
Yeah, so, so chapter 90 is motor vehicles, right? So if somebody's charged with OUI, they're charged under chapter 90. There's a parallel statute, chapter 90B. Chapter 90B is all boats, recreational vehicles, snow vehicles, things like that. And so the second half of 90B, section 20, actually defines recreational vehicle. And then 21 through 50 or something like that is all recreational vehicle things. So there is a between $250 and $1,000 fine for certain recreational vehicle associated offenses, but they're not really enumerated specifically as the reckless operation that we talked about. It's not nearly as either potentially damaging as a 90 violation and not nearly as specific as the other equivalent recreational vehicle statutes that we found in Todd, Providence, Boston. So it's kind of a whole.
Yeah, that helps, because it was just in my mind, I'm knowing that we've got some fines in chapter 90, right? Whether it's 90B or wherever we're going with this, and then trying to implement it here. So this would be in place of and give you more, you can point to the ordinance, actually give a fine, so you're not really referencing 90B. If there is obviously other violations with 90B, you would also give those citations or?
Well, I think for the most part, most officers are either going to go one way
Or the other?
And I think more likely than not, if we're finding out that we're not getting the luck in the courts that we were hoping to, or if we want to go to a situation where we feel this is, this is what's going to take care of this issue, which is hitting them with a steeper fine and also going along with the issues of getting your vehicle or your recreational vehicle back from the tow company, that's probably going to be, I think, more likely of a solution to the problem than going the other way.
Plus 90B is generally enforced by the state environmental police, much more often than regular police or state police. So there's going to be a familiarity with 90, and a lot of police officers may not see an option within 90 to cite these guys for what they're doing.
Right.
I think it, you know, even though Attorney Rumsey's point is very well taken that we need to be a little more judicious about how we're doing it and mindful about what we had in there. A statute specific to recreational vehicles makes sense because of the sort of uniqueness of 90B.
Okay. Counselor, do you have?
Yeah, I guess just to put this in very, very simple terms, it's all applicable only to people who are breaking the law. If you're riding on somebody's personal property, registered or not registered, this isn't, it's not going to come into play. If you're properly loading your vehicle into a truck and transporting it to someplace where you're allowed to use it, there's no harm, no foul. So, I mean, to me, if you don't have a fine that to a certain extent hurts, I don't think it's going to accomplish much. And I guess that would just be my only comments in regard to that.
Okay, what's the next section?
Next section. Flammable fluids is what it's entitled right now. But in essence, it's making it a violation for, and this has happened in other communities, for gas stations to allow a recreational vehicle to fill up at the gas station. The idea behind it is that gas stations, and Chief Goff can probably explain this better than I am, because he explained it very well to me. But, you know, they already have an obligation to make sure that it's an appropriate receptacle. So I don't know if you noticed, but, and I don't notice in other states, but I do notice in Massachusetts that, you know, sometimes you run your credit card, you have to wait for the cashier to approve it. And I guess the idea is they look to make sure you have one of the red receptacles or a vehicle, and you're not putting gas into a Stop &amp; Shop grocery bag, which I've seen on videos before. So the idea, I think, stems from that, is we already put some obligations on the gas station, and this is just one more, because clearly these, none of these vehicles are supposed to be on public ways. So if they fill up, they're clearly going to ride on a public way. You know, so I get it, I understand it. I, I do want to at least articulate, I think this is different in the sense of having a proper receptacle is more a public safety issue. And I, you know, there's at least a suggestion that this is more of an enforcement issue, and it should be left to the police as opposed to the gas station attendant to use your, behind a cash register, behind glass, and don't really have the means or ability to enforce these disordinances. But that's what's up for discussion.
Counselor, proposal?
Excuse me, I guess my only question to that is, what is the penalty if a gas station were to allow an illegal vehicle to be filled up? What happens then? Some have been as high as $1,000 for a first fine and $2,500 for a second fine. I don't know whether that's been challenged yet. I imagine, once those fines actually happen, they will be challenged, whether it's by the ACLU or somebody else. That's my concern. And I personally have a problem with writing a law to scare people into compliance when it's not enforceable. I mean, we really shouldn't have the laws unless they are legal and enforceable. Thank you.
Just so, along those lines, is it, was it the expectation with this to, I mean, it's, again, it's another tool in the toolbox, but how? And again, anything that we draft, right, and I want to say this, I want to clarify my comments, anything we draft should be enforced. So what are we looking to do in terms of enforcement on this, though? Is it truly, you know, sting operations with regards to, you know, gas stations as to whether or not, you know, we're rolling up with illegal vehicles and having those filled or canisters? Are we going to go that far with it, or is it really just, again, to try to, if we know that there's, you know, that they're going to the Shell gas station on, you know, Rodman and Plymouth Ave, and that's where they're constantly going, we need to really kind of tighten down?
And I think, you know, to the, to Attorney Rumsey's point, that obviously if he has an issue with constitutionality, then obviously we'll back off. This is what other communities are doing. I think it's another tool. Number one, it's making it more difficult for these riders to, first off, they're illegal already being on a city street. I don't think it's that difficult to discern, you know, an ATV or a dirt bike versus other items out there. I think when we get to motorized bicycles, mopeds, limited-use motorcycles, then we're getting into some really difficult decisions. But looking outside your window and seeing an ATV there, you can decide not to. But looking outside your window and seeing an ATV there, you can decide not to allow that person to pump. You need to go somewhere else.
Okay. Uh, me, me personally, I can go either way. I think if we think it's, it's going to be challenged, um, in court and we don't have a, a good leg to stand on, I'd, I'd say pull it. And the only reason I say that is because there's, there's an alternative method, right? I mean, they just go buy a red canister and go to the gas station, get gas and then bring it back to their, you know, their location. So it doesn't really prevent it, but I can see what you're saying, like if you're driving up.
The overall philosophy is just to make it as difficult as possible for these people to operate.
Yep. Okay.
In, in the grand scheme of things, has that been an issue thus far of illegal vehicles being filled at gas stations?
Well, it's, it's in and of itself. I mean, here we, here we go again with thin slicing, right?
Yeah.
In and of itself, it's a small piece, but this is the paper cut. This is no matter what you do here, we're going to try to enforce everything against you, to make it as difficult as possible for you to operate on the city street.
Thank you. Any other discussions on that section? No? Okay.
Next section is penalties and this is non-gas station penalties. Um, what's written down right now, but clearly up for discussion, is a first fine of 300, second and subsequent of 500. Um, the gasoline fine for the gas stations is, uh, starts at a thousand, second and subsequent 2,500. Um, I think we should probably start with the discussion of just the operator fines.
So I, I guess when we had our conversation, my, my only response was that just being in CCONC, I know we have a little, little bit of a different process where we actually have to submit our bylaws to the AG's office. So they typically, when we start putting in, you know, fines of a hundred or $300, they'll, they'll always come back and say, no, there's, there's a, a fine schedule that we should be following. So the, the question would be, where are we in terms of the fine schedules that we know Massachusetts general law would require? And I, and I guess I was a little surprised to hear some of the, the fines with 90B being, I think you said 200 or so, they're, they're, they're pretty significant.
250 up to 1,000 is the range. And, and they do it similar to a 90 schedule where it's sort of at the discretion of the prosecutor to recommend a fine, but there's not a first is this, second is this. That's present with like, um, unlicensed operation, a motor vehicle, that sort of thing. But, uh, once you get to like a negligent operation, reckless operation, it's a range and the range under 90B, the, the thing that is closest to this is 250 to 1,000.
Okay. So it's not like we're not starting at $50 for the first offense and we're asking to be at $300. So we're, we're within a, a happy range of what we're seeing in other statutes. Okay.
Yeah, and, and the penalty, it, it fits right in with what the state statute has. The, the question I guess I have is, is this going to be on top of? So for example, you know, if you're riding a wheelie down, uh, South Main Street, you can get hit with the 90B fine of 250 and you could also get hit with potentially this ordinance fine of additional, call it a hundred dollars. Um, I think a hundred is much more reasonable if you're getting hit with a 250 just for having an unregistered ATV on a public way. Um, if you're doing it separately, you know, then, then obviously I think the higher fine may be, uh, appropriate, but it sounds to me like these are going to be kind of add-ons. Is that not the case?
No.
You think it's going to be one or the other?
Correct.
Okay. Then I probably would have to add something there that maybe even addresses that because I'd be worried about if it's a, you know, if we have a fine, say call it 250 and there's still the ability of being fined another 250 for under 90B and maybe we could articulate, you know, either or.
So I guess based on that, then we would want one fine schedule as opposed to individuals, right? So, because I think if you get into sections, they may, unless you put language in there, you know, officers may interpret, like when you start getting into hazardous operation, right? You've got somebody doing a wheelie, you've got to find just say $200 and then you've got a legal operation of, I mean, uh, operation of illegal vehicle, then you've got to find there. So then you start adding it up and you're well over a thousand dollars if it's misinterpreted.
Sure. Yeah. We don't want to make, we're going, well, usually what we do, whenever we have this and it's processed, we're already going through with 90B, not waiting for this to come out. We're already putting out our training bulletin in regard to 90B. We'll be doing the same thing here. So we'll put both things together once there's a vote on the ordinance.
Yeah, but I, I was talking, 90B alone and maybe I was just confusing it. Uh, Corporation Counsel was suggesting that we put the fines in each section, break it down in each section, you know, because I, I think he was saying that if, when you get to the hazardous operation, you could potentially have different fines for either doing a wheelie or having, um, two, two people on a, a bike that only has one. Um, I guess if we start doing that, my concern would be that you would think that you could potentially hit them $250 for each section of the ordinance. I guess I would just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Counsel, I think I'd be to for legality.
No, I, I, I'll go through it and make sure that it could fit. I mean, that's something easy enough to do. Um, it, it sounds like 90B enforcement in the courts will probably happen once you hit the point of negligent operation because that has some real teeth, you know, lose your license for a year. Um, it, you know, I, I do agree and understand, and we've talked about this, you know, if somebody's riding a wheelie down South Main, you and I may think it's negligent operation, but it probably won't be negligent operation in a court of law. Um, and the reason why they ride the wheelies is because they feel they can do it safely. But anything that does rise to the level of negligent operation, we're probably charged with negligent operation in court. So in my mind, we're looking at more of the fines for, I guess, things that we want to discourage, but haven't necessarily put a specific member of the public at risk for, you know, public safety risk. More of a nuisance kind of an idea. So I can, I can, I still think just for ease, it probably makes sense, even if I'm just, you know, being redundant, putting the fines under each section. Um, but I can do that easy enough.
Okay. I would just want language to make sure that we know it's a totality and not.
Right.
Each different violation of the, the section of the ordinance is going to get a fine, that's all. Because I don't think that's the intent.
Correct.
And then is there any discussion question on the, uh, the gas fines, 1,000 and 2,500? Okay. Was that all the sections?
No. Um, next section's about the chief having enforcement, not a problem. I don't really think we need to discuss it then impoundment. So that's a question I, I would ask that the chief maybe lead the discussion because I'm trying to figure out exactly what the ideas behind the impoundment.
So impoundment is a separate section? So you have enforcement and then impoundment?
Correct. Um, the way it's set up, there's a specific paragraph entitled penalties, um, and then a, a, under a separate paragraph, impoundment.
Okay. Chiefs, you want to talk about that?
We're, we're talking about tow companies, right? So the tow company now, obviously we're going to tow the vehicle, we're going to get the citation, um, going to get the, uh, the ordinance and the, uh, assessment. The vehicle, the recreational vehicle will be towed where they'll incur charges for the tow and the storage.
Similar, similar, is that still falling under the?
That's the same way we always do. But here we're going to, we're going to require if it's unregistered and under 90B for them to get it registered, they have, have to have proof of ownership, which is going to prove difficult for the people I think we're targeting. Uh, they're going to have to get the registration and then they're also going to have to show proof that they've paid the fine. And then they, once again, they're going to have to bring a trailer or they're going to have to have a suitable truck to now legally get the recreational vehicle from their tow yard legally back to their private property.
So just in terms of that, so, so obviously the, the tow trucks, they get a daily fee for storage, right? So you got the, the tow, which is set by MGL, right?
Correct.
They provide administrative fee over to you folks for towing. Is that correct or no? Do we not get revenue? No? No? Probably, probably look at that as another revenue. So let's, let's that aside. Um, so, so you got the, you got the cost for towing, then you got the cost for storage. So now the question comes in, from my standpoint, at what point do we step in and take ownership of these vehicles? Because then you're going to just have this astronomical accumulation of storage, right? So like if they'd never, decide never to come back, I'm sure the tow, tow, the tow companies are going to want some type of reimbursement.
They at some point have a process. I'm not sure exactly what, uh, how it, the procedural process is, but they end up getting possession of that vehicle or recreational vehicle becomes their property.
Okay. Is that something we want to see happen? I guess that's the other.
Well, we certainly want, don't want to see them turn around and sell it, that's for sure. Back to the, back to the owner. But, um, you know, obviously making sure, I mean, we can add something in there, you know, ensuring that, I guess, making it illegal for them to sell it or maybe we could restrict them in some way, counselor.
To me, this is the big piece and this, this would be the big piece of the ordinance because, you know, it's, it's hard to make the argument that we're, the ordinance is, is too strong when all you're doing is making them prove that they own it, making them get it registered, which is required by law anyway, pay even assuming it's a reasonable fine and then legally transport it back home because they can't operate on a public way. I mean, that right there is going to, um, I think that'd be the biggest piece of this ordinance.
I agree.
And, and frankly, I'm not sure we need much else other than this in the hazardous operation section. And then it would be my suggestion and just that, there's many ways we can go. My suggestion is maybe start with those two pieces and then see if more is necessary in the future. Um, you know, the, the impoundment and hazardous operation, clearly, um, I don't think we're going to have any legal issues as far as enforcing and enacting and then we can kind of see where it takes us. But, I mean, this is the big piece, I think.
So in terms of the tow company, I mean, is it a like 30 day, 60 day, 90 day?
Counsel, I, I don't know what the formula is. I think it involves the, uh, there, there's a time period and I also believe there's a, uh, an assessment of the worth of the vehicle as well. Um, I, I'm not sure there is a, an MGL that covers that for, for towing companies, but that's their process. I think it's a time and a particular value of that vehicle. If, if the charges tend to go beyond and is a time period, then they go through some type of forfeiture process, but I can get clarification for you on that.
Yeah, that would make sense. Um, when they tow cars, I would think it would be a similar, um, process in terms of retrieving your vehicle and how long they, before they can take ownership of your vehicle, I would think it would be a similar process.
Correct. And I, and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know the exact process, so I will get that for you. I'm not sure if that's a civil process that they have to go through, if they're, if that's something that's already set, uh, by statute, I'll get, I'll get that to you.
Chief, do we know what the difference is between, you know, towing and storage fees for ATV versus a, a typical motor vehicle? Or if there is any difference?
I don't think, I don't believe there's any difference. Um, in the past, motorcycles haven't had a different, uh, statute. I mean, it's just, you're causing a truck to go out, you're causing an operator who's getting hourly wage and you're, you're causing them now to place it in their lot and take up space, so.
So these are going to be significant even without Fall River's action at all? I mean, once, once this vehicle is taken?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, for that one, thanks.
Any further discussion? Are there any other categories or are those?
No, that, that's, those are the categories there.
Okay.
Anything else you wanted to add?
So how's the committee want to proceed? Um, I know Corporation Counsel had mentioned that obviously, um, section three and I just, my section three, I could be off with the numbering, but hazardous operation was a big piece, uh, and then, um, the last one, which was seven, impoundment. Um, and then obviously the enforcement piece would, would fall in line. Do you want to focus on that or do you want to, are we comfortable enough, um, having him go and draft something for all the, the sections?
I think, I think for my purposes, I think a draft ordinance would be more helpful because as you were saying, now you're, you're looking at it as a whole as well and then, and then see how everything, uh, falls into place and fits. I would be comfortable with a draft ordinance at this point and then you tweak it beyond that.
Entertaining all those sections?
Correct.
Not just the two important ones?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Agreed with you.
Okay.
You said a lot better than I did.
So if we're good with that, we'll move forward and do the draft ordinance. Uh, so the only thing I guess I would ask is how many unregistered vehicles do we want to include so we can just have a number in the ordinance?
I still have, you know, you can have 10 unregistered vehicles, but if you're never operating them illegally, why does it matter? That's, that's the only, that, that's my gray area in this. Um, you know, if somebody has 10 acres of land and you tell them, well, you can only have two unregistered vehicles, I don't know, I have, I kind of have a problem with that. I don't know why, but I do. It, it just seems to be a sticking point and especially again, if it's somebody who's always operating legally, it's a mute point. Um, so I don't know, what, what's your opinion on that? What do you feel comfortable with? Because you're the expert on this, not me.
Well, I, I don't know if I, I appreciate your, your kind words, but I don't know if I'd call myself an expert. I, I'm probably no different than anyone here, uh, when it comes to this and it, it really does come down to how you personally feel. And, and, and providing some of these, uh, pieces that we were able to look at, different ordinances and sending it to City Hall, um, I didn't even opine about specifically what number on this issue. It was, it was in most, uh, this piece was in every single other ordinance that I've seen. So everybody included it, it's there. Um, Boston has one, Taunton has four. It's something that's been all over the place, but the idea of limiting of that number has certainly been pretty consistent throughout.
So what would you say the average number of unregistered is that people seem to be comfortable with then?
I, I think, I think that's something for all of us to discuss, but and that's, and that's why we put it here because it's, it's difficult. I mean, I, I understand you, you know, what you, what you're asking me to give you, but to give you, you know, from my opinion versus what I've seen, I mean, it's, it's all over the place. Um, I, I'm not really concerned, to be honest with you, with one or two.
Okay.
Uh, what we're looking at with the situation that we have in the city right now is when you have these gangs of four and six and they're all being stored in one particular warehouse, uh, they're not on, you know, their own individual property, they're in a garage somewhere, those are the ones that we're, we're really thinking about.
Okay. So you would, so in your opinion, to say a maximum of two or a maximum of three unregistered on any one piece of property would be, um, adequate?
I do. If it's outside, I think, I think there's some differences and I, I spoke with Attorney Ramsey quite extensively about this idea and, and Boston, it's one, very strict one. With the exception, or with the exemption, I should say, if, if it's in a garage, then it, you know, it's unlimited, uh, as long as you have the space to properly store them. Uh, but if it's outside in your property, open to the view of the rest of the public, then you're only limited to one unregistered vehicle.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking too, though, on the other side of that coin is if you're living next door, you don't want to see a dozen unmarked vehicles just randomly parked all over the place either, so.
Correct.
Wish I hadn't thought of that until just now. Yeah. So I guess I would feel comfortable with two or three maximum, probably two, the more you think about it.
Just very briefly, so I, I think what you just said is the first answer to the question, right?
Yep.
Just a, if the vehicles aren't being used, it's just, it's kind of an eyesore, right? Especially in close contact. The second is, uh, you know, if a vehicle is validly owned, it's likely to be registered. A vehicle that's stolen or not validly there, being hidden away, whatever, more likely than an unregistered vehicle has some questionable provenance. And then finally taxes, excise tax, right? So we're collecting excise tax on registered vehicles. If a vehicle is not registered and is just there, there's no revenue that, that the, you know, that the state or the city or who, you know, whoever you are is realizing on that. So there's a, there's a number of reasons why we want to keep tabs on the vehicles by making sure they're registered.
And I think the real, uh, when you talk about the real aficionados, people who are really into the sport of dirt bikes or ATVs or that's their recreation. For the most part, you know, those are going to be the, the people who want to keep their, uh, vehicles clean. know, those are going to be the, the people who want to keep their vehicles clean.
Safe from the weather.
They want to keep them safe, they're going to put them in garages or in some other covering. What we're talking about, and I, and it's just my personal opinion, that the people that are causing people to be fearful on the streets, and the people who are doing this stuff, you know, going around cars and, and causing that type of toll, are not that same group. I think when you're talking about the people who are storing these unregistered vehicles in backyards, those tend to be more likely, a higher probability that people were causing these other issues.
So I think after that discussion, I'd be comfortable with two maximum.
Yeah.
You yield?
I yield, sorry.
Counsel Repose.
Yeah, I, I think it all goes down to people who are doing it legally and people who are not doing, doing it illegally, illegally. So people who are doing illegally, got to do everything they possibly can to make sure, like you said, you know, if they're recreational, to follow the letter of the law. Those who are not, are not. So that's what we're really trying to target here, is those who are, you know, driving down Pleasant Street, 15 of them down the road, and as a motorist, you have no choice but to either pull over fear for your life, you're going to get hit. It almost happened to me a few weeks ago, coming down Pleasant Street, and they're just blowing right out of the street. So that's, that's the group we're targeting, and that's what we want to stop, so.
Correct. May I have a swat?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're absolutely right, and, and just for one, I live in the city here, and obviously, I was here over the week, driving around over the weekend, and I saw numerous motorcycles in and around the city together, up to groups of 10 motorcycles, all legal, all registered, not causing a problem for any motorist, it was just business as usual. That's not the groups that we're looking at, we're looking at these groups that are going out there in small bands and causing these issues.
Damn, yeah, I, I know my, God, Chief.
And I, I think, you know, when we talked to Counsel Kadim over this, we wanted to include some of these wider pieces of it. I think we talked about writing the ordinance doing it one time as best we can, and so when we looked and did the research, so some of these pieces that are coming in may not seem so significant or particular to the problem that we're trying to deal with right now. They're, you know, outlying situations that we may deal with, and we want to do it all at once if we can.
Yeah, and I think that's why it'd be helpful, once this is all put together as a draft ordinance, to kind of review it piece by piece, because I think they're, they're going to be running into some situations of interpretation that we will try to avoid ahead of time, so. With that, I yield.
Okay. So just to, I guess, kind of reiterate what we were just discussing, so unregistered vehicles, two max, I guess if you want to throw in an ex, an exception to that, if it's in stored, obviously in a garage or some type of housing unit, that's fine. I think on other property, I think everybody was good with that, two and a half acres, so we can move forward with that. And then obviously, the fines, as you feel, is adequate, and the penalties were, were good, so. If we can draft that, and then when, when you folks are ready, just let me know, and then we can establish a next meeting to discuss this. All right?
Any other discussions, questions for the administration?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Will that come automatically back here without us making some type of motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we had tabled, we had tabled, yep.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Repose, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Going back to item number eight, the resolution considering combining the Historical Commission with the Florida Historic District, that was already lifted from the table.
Okay, so I drafted this over a year ago, where I combined, there's basically Section, Article Two and Article Four of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. It's been sent to the Historic Commission, I think the Preservation side as well, for review. They have made some very minor changes, so it's back now. I have copies for everybody. Just by way of background, our Historic Preservation, Chapter 38 of our ordinances, was a little outdated. Article One, it's entitled in general, but there's literally nothing on it, so there's, there's no change of Article One. I only have one extra copy of the current ordinance as it's written, but as you can see, there's literally nothing on Article One. Article Two, there's almost nothing, it's, it's entitled the Historic Commission. And then if you skip to Article Four, it's the Highlands Local Historic District, and there's some teeth in there as to what the local historic district is. So what was presented to me, and it made perfect sense, is we should change Article Two to have all the powers and duties of the Historic Commission, the Historical Commission. So that'll be Article Two. Haven't touched Article Three at all, but then skipping forward to Article Four is the actual historic districts that are, have been implemented. Right now, there's only one local historic district, the Highlands Local Historic District, but the idea is this could expand with time. So right now, it's just that one provision for the local historic districts, and all the teeth are in Article Two, which is Historic Commission. Of all the changes suggested by the Historic Commission, I just wanted to note for the record, I'm not sure everybody's aware of it, they, they had some significant suggestions about demolition and everything else, that's already included in Article Three, which I haven't touched at all. So of anything of substance, there was just a couple, they wanted to add the word "local" a few times, but everybody's in agreement with how Article Two and Four are, and I think everybody now understands, Article Three I never touched, it's always been there.
Any discussions?
Seeing none, so Attorney Rumsey, so Article Two that you submitted and Article Four are ready to go to be proposed as amendments to
That's correct.
Chapter 38?
Right. No change to Article One or Three, and complete changes to Two and Four.
Okay. And where do we see the, so the combining of the Florida Historic District Commission, where does that, is that Article Four, is that?
I think the idea of the Historic District Commission is, is going away. I think part of the idea, if I remember right, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that was the commission that was, the purpose of it was to enact this, it was the Study Commission, to enact the Historic Commission. And now that we have it, we don't need that committee anymore.
So by taking Article Four, doing the local historic district in this ordinance, we've accomplished what we needed to accomplish, and obviously, eliminating the
Initially, it was, there were two, there were two separate commissions. So initially, there were two separate commissions, there was the Historical Commission, and then there was the Historic District Commission Study Committee.
Okay.
And the Study Committee was put together to determine where the new historic district was going to be. And then when that was enacted, they created, instead of getting rid of the Study Committee, they just created a separate committee to oversee just the 47 properties in the 40C District. And it was kind of redundant, because it was the same people on both committees, and then the issue came into play when the charter came in, and then we had people, the same people sitting on two committees, and there was a whole big thing about that. But essentially, we, it, it's for the same purpose, it's just, so we would oversee that one section, but it didn't make sense to have two separate committees, especially because one of them had, there was a crossover on both committees, only we couldn't get enough people to serve on two separate committees. It was always, we were always having trouble getting a quorum, and we still are. We have a trouble when we try and get a quorum for the District Commission, and we have a homeowner in the commission, in the, in the district that needs to do something to their property, and we can't get, you know, a quorum together in enough time for them to actually be able to do things in a feasible amount of time. And same thing with the Historical Commission, we have people that come to us for letters of support, we have the developers that are coming in because they need their letters for tax credits from the state, people for the Community Preservation Committee funds, and they have a deadline that they have to do this, so it makes it tougher. So combining the two, we actually, we will have, if we combine the two, we'll have six people, and we would just need one other person. And we did, I did get an application from somebody that's interested, so that would give us actually a full seven people for the one commission, and then we'd finally be pretty good.
Great, okay.
So yeah, I think this one's ready to go.
Discussion, motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the
As amended.
Recommended ordinance for Articles Two and Four was made by Counsel Deion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Repose, a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this mean that?
We've just got to go to counsel for, for first reading, and then, so, two meetings will be good.
Perfect.
You're welcome.
Finally.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other business before us, is a motion adjourned?
To adjourn.
Motion made by Counsel Repose, second by Counsel Deion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Nationally, the City Council Committee on Ordinance is now adjourned.